Happy New Year, everybody. Welcome to Board of Selectmen meeting for January 7, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and move to the approval of the minutes. I still had a couple of suggestions for our minutes of December 10, so we're going to hold on those, but I would like to move for the consideration the minutes of December 17, 2019.
I've reviewed those minutes, and I move for acceptance of the minutes of December 17.
So I would ask for us to move those minutes with a couple of ministerial changes, just a couple of typos that I'd like to have.
Yeah, some names need to be corrected, but the substance of the minutes.
But otherwise, the substance of the minutes, okay.
Second.
Falls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And without further ado, we will, oh, no, public comment for items not on the agenda. Almost forget about that one. Seeing and hearing none, we will move to the South Shore Country Club. Kevin, Christine, if you could introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Good evening, and thanks for having us tonight. I'm Christine Smith, Chairman of the Country Club Management Committee, along with Kevin Whalen, who is the Executive Director for the Country Club, and we're here to present our budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
Year '21.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Tonight, we're submitting a budget, a request of $1,766,742. That is a reduction of $1 million from actual spending last year of $1,848,675. You know, the Country Club, obviously, is a very important part of the town. You know, we offer a full-service municipal country club. We have the 18-hole golf course, we have driving ranges, we have PGA Tour simulators, which we purchased, we have, you know, the pro shop, we have tennis courts, the bowling alley, dining, function facilities, professional lessons, and several youth programs that we have throughout the season. We provide, you know, an exceptional experience for all guests throughout the season, and we partner with recreation to have great sports camps and offer, you know, great lessons along with, you know, other, you know, things like the haunted hayride as well in October. So we do, we have good partnerships with our other, you know, with our other departments in town, and also, we provide, you know, a great experience for any members and guests that come to the Country Club. I should say permit holders. I get corrected at work all the time for that. You know, the, we, you know, the Country Club Management Committee, and I'd like to thank them as well for helping out this year and the friends. We raised $17,000 with the Hingham scramble, which we're going to use to improve the course, but we're also looking at long-term infrastructure improvements to the facility from, you know, obviously, like, you know, long-term is the new pool, a new maintenance facility. Those are the type of things that we're going to be looking at long-term. You know, the Country Club does need a capital infusion, and part of the budget and the reason why we're reducing our spending is to ensure that we're able to improve, to afford, as we move forward, the capital investments that we're going to need to make. You can see here, the rounds were down just a little bit last year. That did not affect our revenue from FY, you know, from the previous fiscal year. One of the reasons why was because we did not promote group-ons or heavily discounted. What we did try to do is we tried to provide, you know, people paying full price, which I think worked, and because the revenue remained flat. But at the same time, one of the biggest complaints that people had when they came to the South Shore Country Club was the pace of play, and a lot of public courses deal with that. So what we did was we allowed, instead of nine-minute tee times, we just moved it back to 10-minute tee times, and I think the average, you know, pace of play was improved dramatically. The average round was probably about four hours to four hours and 15 minutes, even on our busiest days. So I think that's one of the things that we're, you know, we're kind of glad that we did that. So what we're proposing in our budget this year, and the Country Club Management Committee has approved, is that we're going to increase on weekends only, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, a $5 increase on our fees, which should generate about $15,000 to $20,000. The reason why we feel that that is important, because if we're saving people an hour, we're taking a little bit of a hit on the, on the tees going off. So we increased our, our, you know, see, so we provided the service, we've proven that we've provided the service, so we're moving up our tee times, I mean, we're moving up our fee on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. So with a card, it will be $75 for a resident and $85 for a non-resident on weekends.
Not a bad deal.
You know, we talked about pace of play and improvements. One of the things we're also doing to improve pace of play and for beginner golfers, where with the money that we receive from the scramble pot of it, we're going to invest with forward tees, which would allow, for instance, a tee that's a little closer to the hole, especially like on the first and 10th hole, that would get you over the brook, so you don't feel as bad about yourself if you hit it into the brook. If you go on the other side, you're, at least you're on your way, and it would help pace of play. One of the things that you can see, too, purchasing and updating the golf simulators, which we were installing today and that you voted on a few weeks ago, you know, that is going to help, obviously, because we're not going to have that $40,000 line item for expenditures next fiscal year. So that's going to help in our long-term, you know, our long-term spending. This fiscal year, we had to invest in a new weather alert system. We've invested in other, you know, capital equipment, like groundskeeping equipment, also some storage equipment and things of that nature that we've been renting for many, many years. It just made financial sense to move forward and have some of those one-time purchases to make sure that we didn't have any monthly bills. So we've tried to eliminate all the monthly bills that we can and move forward. So the staffing, we have approximately 10, we have 10 full-time staff that are year-round, and we have 24 part-time seasonal, and it goes up and down. The bowling alley kind of lays off the seasonal help in the summertime, and then, obviously, we pick up significantly in the golf course with starters and grounds crew out on the course. Our budget for the, it's 41% of our budget is payroll, and we have $164,000 for utilities, $135,000 for golf course treatments, our applications of fertilizer and things of that nature in line. We're going to also include in this budget a $92,000 debt service, which is for the equipment that we purchased this fiscal year. And also, we have a $75,000 line item for pro shop merchandise. It's one of the things is we've reduced that. I'm trying to make sure that we get to a place where we're at least breaking even. The pro shop is more or less a place that you're, you know, it's a service for, you know, permit holders, but also people that are visiting the Country Club. So as much as we try to have everything there, I mean, we want to make sure that at the same time that we're not losing money on the pro shop. So we're reducing that line item, not significantly, but by enough to make sure that we are profitable. So our expenditures are going to be $1,766,742. You know, as I've mentioned, several of the factors why the number has gone down, the revenue projections are $1,901,500. And one of the things that we're looking to do is, you know, as I said, we're going to increase the $5 on the greens fees for the weekends, but also $5 for tournaments. It's been like over five years since we've gone up on any of the tournament fees. So when we haven't had any real reluctance to that, I mean, we've had a very robust, you know, season as far as booking for tournaments as well. So that should bring in another $15,000 as well. So we're looking to, you know, that our revenue would be bumped up. We've had a very stagnant revenue. We've been around $1,800,000 to about $1,850,000 over the last four or five years. So it hasn't really gone up at all, and it's been very steady. I mean, one of the things, obviously, it's very difficult to predict in a seasonal weather-related business, you know, but I think, you know, you can see that we do have a very good base of like about 1,800, 1,850. So we're trying to see if we can get that up to 1,900, so we can turn a profit of a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Christine, anything?
I guess the only thing I would add is a little bit different than last year's. Last year, Kevin was new as the Executive Director, and I was also new as the Country Club Chair. And so I think we've got a nice year behind us of a budget that we actually could see rather than a budget that we inherited, and that gives, you know, I think the both of us a lot more comfort as to what we're presenting to you tonight is based upon sort of experience of people that have done it rather than people that inherited something. Not that there was anything wrong before, but that's why, I think, another sort of factor in the change, change of numbers. And also, just to remind people that we also have a little bit more wiggle room, because we have paid off the debt service for the irrigation equipment that was done a number of years ago.
Okay.
So sort of, you know, paid off one mortgage and looking to enter into another one while trying to take care of things like our equipment.
Okay.
And also, the other thing, it's not a huge game changer in terms of dollar amounts, but we also did just renegotiate the lease with Vista Verde, so that's another five-year extension that paid a little bit as well.
Yep.
And you will notice in the revenue side of that, the revenue is a little bit higher for other reasons, too, because we're doing the, the way that we've been doing the accounting on the expenses, because the way that the lease reads is that we pay all the utilities, and then they reimburse us for those utilities. So it's just the way we were doing the accounting before, it's, we're capturing more revenue now than we were previously. We pay the expenses upfront, but then we get reimbursed, and we show that as revenue.
Okay.
So that number's up, but it's really just kind of a recapturing of the expenses that we had with the restaurant.
Okay. And do you want to take a minute and just explain that you're an enterprise fund for the town?
Yeah, so the, what an enterprise account means is that we essentially, we're run like a business, more than a service. So we, we are restricted that we have to basically run a balanced budget and, you know, be profitable. So we're working our way to doing that, and, you know, this year, I think we will be in a good place, in a good position. We've done a lot of different things over the last couple of years to get rid of bills and to take care of those one-time items, one-time items, to ensure that we are, you know, profitable enterprise.
Thank you.
And that's why, again, we're reducing our spending as much as possible to ensure that we can, you know, afford some of the capital improvements, whether it's the maintenance facility that we need or the turf care center that we need to replace.
Great, thank you. Joe, do you have any questions for the Country Club?
I do, because I noted some real changes in the requests for expenditures, and I just want to make sure that they're realistic. So I see under R&amp;M equipment dropped from 40,000 to 30,000. Golf cart fuel dropped from 35,000 to 20,000. And fungicides went from 60,000 to 50,000. Fertilizer down from 61,000 to 40,000. I mean, there's, there's a lot of decrease there. Is that going to affect the quality of what South Shore Country Club delivers?
So to answer the question, I think it's more based on actual spending. So the golf cart fuel reduced by, it was 25,000 the year prior for the golf cart fuel, and we were able to get it down to 14,000 last year.
Yep.
So those are actual numbers, so I feel comfortable with even, I think I put it at $20,000 for that number. So I feel comfortable with that request, even if gas does go up. As far as the fungicides, it's really based on spending. One of the things that, you know, as, you know, the golf superintendent that we have does an excellent job, Jake Silver, and I think one of the things that he's very aware of is trying to get to a more natural, more kind of the way you treat the course. So those, the actual spending that we've had in the past, I think he's, it's based on, you know, those requests are based on that. We've kind of narrowed it down, but at the same time, I think he's looking to reduce applications as much as possible.
Okay. And then golf carts, I didn't see any actuals, but the budget went from 30 to 10.
We didn't have any spending in that line item, so we just cut it to $10,000.
Okay. And then...
The carts are pretty new.
Yeah, the carts are three, three, this is the, this will be the fourth season, I think.
And you may have covered this under the, in the pro shop, the seasonal, is that, let me ask, what is that? Because that went from 207 down to 180.
I think, so one of the things that we're working on is, I think, we realize, recognize, I think, the position that the South Shore Country Club has and the market that we have. So we're looking at that we want to be a full-service country club kind of experience on weekends, but what people really look for during the week is kind of value. So what we're going to do is provide, try to provide that service, where we're going to be doing the bag drops and things of that nature on the weekends, and provide that service where we're asking for that extra $5. But on the weekdays, the Monday through Thursday, we're going to really try to, you know, narrow our expenses as far as starters and things of that nature and cut back. So that's kind of what the plan is, is try to kind of be both, because I think people that play golf, and I think during the week, it's like people really look for that value.
Yep.
And at the weekends, they look. So we're going to really have, we have a schedule in place that we've, essentially, it starts off like from April 1, and every two or three weeks, based on the schedule, because you have your, kind of your, your season goes along, every two or three weeks it picks up, and then it climaxes, and then as you get into later in the summer where, you know, the season comes down. I think at the end of the day, where you really are able to reduce your spending is kind of on the shoulder season, and that's when you need to do it, because it's, you know, once it starts getting dark and say, you know, later August and early September, you know, it's, you know, that's where you can really kind of cut back on your staffing and the people, the full-timers that are here, we just need to do more.
What about the golfers who are playing in the snow?
They were people out there today, and Kathy Curley was one of them.
Love Kathy Curley.
Not to drop any names, but, you know, but she was, she, if she was out there today, and there was, you know, there's several, and it's a good, you know, we were open, we have nine holes open, people are more than welcome to come up, and it's a good way that we make people pay their permits, for their permits, before they're able to go out or they have to pay the money.
That's awesome.
So it's a good way to collect some revenue.
Joe, the only other thing that I would just, that I would just mention, just to keep in mind, is that our fiscal, this fiscal year end of June 30 is kind of right in the middle of golf season, and I think we've tried to be true to paying things, you know, in one fiscal year versus the other fiscal year. So just keep that in mind as you, it's not a 1231 fiscal year, it's a 630 fiscal year.
Yep.
So sometime timing of money, depending on what 12-month period you look at, might be a little bit different.
Right.
Just kind of as anecdotal.
Yeah, we're kind of, we were running about $50,000 ahead this fiscal year from last fiscal year as far as revenue, and then, you know, December happens, and that's part of the problem. Like, last year, we had a, you know, a hellacious, you know, April and early May.
Horrible six weeks.
And it's just, you know, you're running ahead, and then all of a sudden, the bottom can fall out. So, you know, like I said, being in a seasonal business that's, you know, weather-dependent is not an easy thing to be, to predict, but you do the best you can, you know? And I think, I think, you know, the revenue is very steady, and I think at the end of the day, the numbers really show, when you look at, you know, how steady the revenue is, no matter how bad the weather is, people pretty much go out and golf like there four or five or six times a year, you know? And it's, so it's really as much as, you know, the weather is lousy, you know, you're going to pick that up in later in the season, or, you know, it might not be yet this fiscal year, but it might be the next fiscal year, and it all evens out.
I mean, people really have great expectations for what South Shore delivers, and you folks really deliver, so thank you for that.
Right, thank you. And our staff does, you know, does an excellent job, from the pro staff to our grounds crew. One of the things is we do invest in our staff, where we have, you know, a significant amount of staff over the winter time. You know, they're busy, they do all the little things that you didn't expect. We'll be doing tree work and things of that nature to get more light on the course, to ensure that the course is, continues to improve. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, since the town has owned it, that it has, you know, continually improved, and, you know, that's why we're able to get, you know, the MGA to come here and run tournaments, but also the MIA runs, you know, the high school championships and things of that nature here as well.
Mary. Yeah, a couple of questions, just on the, on the debt service. Kevin, you've mentioned, there's $92,000 in there. Just, could you just, like, what projects are those for? Are those things that, just trying to match up the dollars?
So the $92,000, yeah, the $92,000 was for the equipment that we purchased last year. The equipment was $415,000 that was bonded out last year. So we bought rough mowers, we bought, we also bought fairway mowers. One of the things that we did do, we switched out, we bought an extra fairway mower rather than an extra rough mower, and that has allowed us to able to, rather than say like six hours do all the mowing, we're able to do it in four hours. So if you have a tournament, or if you have to really kind of move through that, so, you know, because the rough can, you can let the rough grow, you know, for an extra day, but a lot, you can't with the fairways. So, you know, the equipment has made us a little bit more, a lot more efficient, you know, from, but that's what the $92,000 is for, and the debt service is for.
So, so would it be fair to say that this budget doesn't include any costs associated with the maintenance facility?
No, it does not.
Okay, I just, I know that's something big that's coming, and I just wanted to make sure, just of the timing. Could you just also kind of quickly speak to the utility costs in the, in the restaurant budget? It, were you affected by that, I believe with the electric, there was like a surcharge?
Demand charge.
Yeah, demand charge?
Yeah.
Is that, is that why the utilities are up so much higher in the, in the restaurant?
No, it's, no, so it's essentially the, what happened was last year, I think it was, I was trying to, being new, I, you know, only here for a few months, I was trying to say, okay, well, they're going to pay their bills, and then, and I think from an accounting standpoint, it just doesn't work that way.
Understanding.
So what we did was we changed, you know, the way that we're recognizing the expenses, and then we also kind of, you know, but, and then we're kind of looking, reflecting in it in the revenue as well. So that, that's why the increase in spending is up in the restaurant, and also the revenue is up in the restaurant as well.
And then, just, just one other question. You know, during the year, you're, the Country Club budget is somewhat unique, because you have both revenue and expenses. And, you know, when I think of munis and I think of our financial systems, it's kind of set up to every month, let people know how much money they spent, but I imagine for you, it's equally important to understand kind of how much is coming in. I guess my, my question to the two of you is, do you, do you have, are you getting the information that you need to manage this budget during the year? Because it is a little bit different.
Right. So I do, you know, the revenue side, I reconcile on a monthly basis, and then on the monthly, I get all the expenses that Sue has. We know what we have anyways, but I do get a printout. So for instance, I just did the six-month comparable from this fiscal year to last fiscal year. You know, we're down about $40,000 in expenses from this year to last year, and that's with some of those one-time things that we talked about. So, you know, so we're down about $40,000, and at the same time, I do. So the answer is yes, we do, and I also, you know, look at the revenue, and I reconcile that, you know, for all the accounting. So that was actually part of, we had an audit two years ago, that was part of the audit that we do that on a monthly basis, and we've been doing that.
And I can just jump in on that, just to help the departments keep track. Remember, we do quarterly reviews of all the departmental budgets and revenues for these guys that go on on a quarterly basis.
Thank you. And, you know, in, over the years, every time the Country Club budget comes, we've talked over the years about being able to provide for the Country Club to kind of have its own little bit of a rainy day fund, because, you know, no pun intended, but the seasonality of your business and the closing of the fiscal year on June 30 just, you know, puts an awful lot of pressure on everybody that's operating it. And I, I think this is the first budget that I've seen where the expenses are not equal to the full revenue, and so my hope is that that creates a little bit of breathing room so that if there are a couple of rainy weeks, I don't want to jinx anything, that you can sustain it. I would just also say that I really admire and appreciate the thought process on this budget. I mean, what, what you're doing is you're looking and saying, what level of services can we afford to provide our customers based on the revenue that's coming in? I mean, that's really how we should all be doing our budgets, and I think because you have a line of sight to both the revenue side and the expense side, you pay much closer attention. But what's clear to me is, in this budget, you and the committee have had to make some tough choices. You've had to make some tough choices on service levels, and I imagine that's not easy. My hope is that it gives you a little bit of breathing room into the spring, and I just want to say that I appreciate the thought and the way that you're approaching this budget. I think it's, it's just top-notch, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think, you know, at the end of the day, I think we have to work to show, you know, the town and the leaders of the town that we can afford when we come to you for the maintenance facility, that we can afford it, and, you know, and take out that capital investment and be able to afford to pay back.
I, it seems to me that what you're kind of doing right now is you're trying to create capacity within your budget so that you can absorb it. I, I think, again, all departments should kind of take a cue from that, because when we borrow money, it's not free.
Right.
And again, I, I think you, because you manage both sides of the P and L, and it's all contained, I think you have a more direct line of sight to some of that.
Right.
But I, I appreciate the long-term thinking, and I, I understand that some tough choices were made along the way, and I, I appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And I would say, as the, Kevin has done just a great job for the, for the Country Club. We were really so pleased that he came on board in Hingham. And Kevin is, he's a spreadsheet guy. It's hard to find a golf guy who's also a spreadsheet guy.
Coming at golf.
And Kevin is both.
Coming at golf.
And, just one thing, I just wanted to say, just because I know, I know we have an audience at home, just to remind people of, when you asked the question about the debt service and the capital, the equipment that we buy is equipment that we use to mow all the town fields, not just the Country Club. And so that's also a savings of capital dollars that maybe other departments wouldn't have to spend. So I think there's sort of a, you can look at the dollars and cents, but there's sort of intangible things in this budget that don't jump out at you, but that people should, should keep in mind as we continue to look at the Country Club as being a town asset that services everyone in the town and all departments in the town. Those types of things are a part of it.
Yeah, it was, you know, we do use, you know, some, much of the equipment we do use on the fields, like, you know, so we have the annual sand pro, who's going to get that around, you know, first week of May, because it's a big fight between the ballfields and the, and the golf people, so. And the golf people always win.
I was going to say. No offense, Hingham Little League. You know, I, I would agree with both Joe and Mary that, first of all, I think your presentation tonight, both written and oral, is outstanding. It really gives us a lot of confidence in the operation. It's not an easy aspect of the, of the town to run. You know, in addition to the seasonality, the golf, you've got, you know, the lines of businesses you have there that are each unique and each have their own stressors really, really depend on your management skills and the management skills of the CCMC. So, you know, the simulators, the restaurant, the bowling alley, like, you could run any one of those really as a challenging business, right? And you fold all those under one tent. So I, I think that you've really done a great job in presenting the numbers. You know, I think you're putting forward, to Joe's point, a look and feel and experience there that the town can be proud of, but also that the town feels welcome at. And I think that that says, again, a lot about your leadership and the leadership of the management company and kind of sending, defining that culture there as well, which I think is important to the town in terms of, you know, our opportunity to, you know, access that. So you may have a Country Club feel, but it's still a town Country Club, and I think that that's, that's an important aspect of, I think, the community element of that operation. The one question I had was the pool. I see that you're, you're carrying $10,000 for that for next year, is that kind of a placeholder?
That's just in case of some incidental, like, you know, expenditure that I don't anticipate, but it's, you know, potentially, if there is something there that I have, we have to do.
Okay.
I just didn't want to zero it out, it was, you know.
Things pop up.
Things do, things do pop up, especially if you zero it out, it would definitely happen. Questions from the audience with respect to the Country Club budget? Seeing none. I know you have another stop to make, so I don't want to hold you up. Look at it, perfect timing, this is perfect.
That comes starts in two minutes.
All right. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you all.
Thanks for your hard work.
Great job, thank you.
Tonight's like my favorite, this is my favorite budget night. Next up is the library.
Hey Linda, how are you? David.
Good evening, everyone.
Linda and David, if you could introduce yourselves and the members of the Library Board of Trustees who are with us tonight, I'd appreciate that.
All right. May I do that?
You certainly.
I'm David Mahagan, I'm Chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Hingham Library, and to my right, Linda Harper, Library Director, and also with us tonight, Lucy Hancock, Vice Chairman of the Library Board, and to her left is Jeremy Parker, Trustee Jeremy Parker, who is Chief Financial Officer, Treasurer of the Library Board, and Chairman of the Finance Committee. And also, I see trustee Joanne Mitchell is here with us tonight, so we, the shelf is full of library people here.
Very good. All right. If you could take us through your presentation, that'd be great.
Fabulous, thank you. So we have prepared a level services budget for fiscal '21 with no new funding requests. I want to point out that our budget reflects our needs in operating and maintaining the library's building, resources, and services. As you'll see from the presentation we've provided on the slides, our statistics show that the library is busy as ever. our statistics show that the library is busy as ever. We had a quarter of a million visits to the library last year. We circulated over 300,000 items. We had 190,000 connections to our wireless service. 20,000 people, adults, children and teens, attended over 800 library programs. And we're a community resource that serves people of all ages in the community. People come for the programs, they come for the collections, they come to access technology to get assistance and help in finding things, researching things, learning things. And then people just love to come to the library to gather, to stay, to read, to study and to meet their friends. It is a, it is a community gem. We are busy as ever, and it's, it's a valuable resource to the community. We have, on a new initiatives, we have a long-range plan that we'll be focusing on in the next year. Our current plan is 2016 to 2020, so it's expiring at the end of this year. We'll have a committee working and we'll be gathering a lot of input from the community. So we're hoping everyone will participate in getting us information about what they'd like to see for the library in the next five years. As for the budget, we have, we have prepared a level services budget. Total operating budget includes both salaries and expenses, and it represents a 2.3 increase over last year's budget. For the salaries, the total salaries are $1,521,020. I want to point out, this does not include any non-union increases. It does include step increases longevity. But it is important to note that our union contract does expire on June 30th. So any new negotiated increases will be part of Article Four, so they're not included in the, these expenses. As for the operating expenses, some of our major items are always repair and maintenance, which we use for the building on a five-year rolling average. Utilities, as we know, it's always expensive to run a big building like ours. We also have our OCLN assessment, which is, represents a 3% increase over last year's number. It's the amount we pay to be part of the OCLN network that gives us access to technology, infrastructure, cataloging resources, access to databases. It's, it's an invaluable resource. And also our book budget. So as you know, we have lots of things in the library. When I say books, I mean books and materials. It's the books, the movies, the music, the databases. So we do have, have to make a state requirement in order to get state aid for that, based on a formula. So that's always a considerable expense. As for the, the books and materials expenses, I do want to point out the amount that we're asking for from the town, which is $66,485, only represents a portion of the total of our materials expenditure. The same, this, this current year, for example, the trustees are expected to contribute $215,000 towards those purchases. So it is important to note that the trustees are doing their part, you know, to contribute resources to a community. And also programs, it's important to note, they also contribute 100% to the programs that we deliver, that brought in 20,000 people last year. Those are the major items I have. Anything you want to add, David?
Did you want to say anything about the electric piece of it?
Well, I know, Karen, you had mentioned the electric. There's a demand usage charge that is fairly new that, so there's a small increase to the electric because we're accounting for that demand usage that had not been in the formula from previous years.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that.
I would only add that I, I think, we think it's a fairly tight, tight budget. And we are very much aware of the continuing and never decreasing demand on library services. I think with the, with the same staff and, and with, we think reasonable, reasonable increases, we think we, we're managing to, to meet the need that the town expects us to meet. But it, it, we're, we're continuing to be astounded by the, by the public demand. And it isn't going to, those who said libraries are going to disappear and become obsolete and go away could not be more wrong, it's just the other way around. Library demands have changed greatly, and they're evolving. And great things are happening at the Hingham Library. We're really meeting these demands in new ways, in many new ways. So we're proud of the job our staff has done in developing this budget. And the trustees are confident of it.
And I'll add, so altogether with the total salaries, which is $1,521,020, total expenses are $346,264. We're asking for a total operating budget of $1,867,284. Again, 2.3% increase over last year.
Any questions? Joe?
Could you talk a little bit about services being delivered to the senior community? Coordination with the senior center and what, if anything, needs to be done to enhance that?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So we actually, once a month, we go up to Linden Ponds. I have a team of people who go up and they will, we, we have a different topic every, every month. So we'll go up and we'll have a technology, you know, like technology pettings. We bring your, you know, we'll bring our tech things, show people how to use them. We'll have a drop-in center where people can come and ask us questions. We'll do library registration. So we go up every month and we try to provide services to help the people who, it's hard to leave Linden Ponds. They do have a bus that brings people, but sometimes it's easier for people just to meet us in the lobby. So we try to help them there and help them access our online resources. Another really important thing is for people who have mobility issues or have trouble getting out, being able to have databases, books, movies, music. You can get all of that online through the library too, which is a really valuable resource. Some of the other things we have for seniors, well, and for anybody, we have a home delivery service. It's run by volunteers. And I do want to give a shout out to all our volunteers. Our volunteers at the library, we have about 100 volunteers, they gave over 5,000 hours of time last year. They do things like run the bookstore, do the home delivery service. They come and help us with all kinds of projects, mending, circulation. But one of the nice things we have is a home delivery service. And when people can't get to the library, we'll actually meet with them, have them tell us what they want. We have a volunteer pick out items for them, and another volunteer drive it to their house and drop it off. And every two weeks, we'll exchange items, which is another thing we do. The senior center, I haven't worked greatly with, there's Jennifer who's over there now. In past, Barbara and I had coordinated closely and I had talked to Jennifer. We need to connect a little and do some things together. Having gone over there in past years, a lot of their customers are our patrons too. So there's a lot of crossover as it is. They go there, then they come to us, and so we try to coordinate a little bit. They, a lot of them come to our programs, and when I've gone over there, they're at their programs too.
In terms of the budget, the one item that jumped out at me was books and periodicals, which you're up over 11,000 here. That's, that's the biggest jump of any category?
Yes, that's due to state aid requirements. So what happens is, the state has a formula to receive state aid, which allows us, it gives us some money back every year, about, last year was about $32,000 that we then put into buying more things for the library. But it also allows us to apply for state grants. It makes us eligible for things like the construction grant that we had applied for, eligible for, you know, just technology grants, service grants, things like that. So it's, it's a good thing to be able to do. And what it is, is to get that number, it's actually a formula. They take the last three years of total appropriated municipal budget, they'll average it out, divide it by three, and then multiply it by two and a half percent. So they basically want to see a two and a half percent increase over your last three years' total municipal appropriation. And that's how that gets to that number. So we take that number, we do the, the math. The trustees, as I said, have contributed about $215,000. So we take that number, back that out, and then the difference you see represents the, you know, about $10,774 increase. And that's what's our requirement to make state aid. I will say for that, materials are expensive. It's expensive to buy a book, but as you may, some people don't know, it's even more expensive to buy an ebook. And the databases are terribly expensive because you're licensing for a town of 23,000 people. So those expenses are not, it's not like you can just go buy a cheap paperback. It doesn't quite work that way. Some of the ebooks and audiobooks are quite pricey. So that money is, is well-used, and if, you know, you've been to our library, you can see the resources we have. It's, it's phenomenal to be able to offer those items to the members of the public.
Joe, can I just ask, Mary has a follow-up on the books and periodicals.
I don't want to get into the weeds on the formula, but if I look at that line item, Linda and David, over four years, it's increased by 62%, which is an average of about 16% each year. And so I'm just trying to reconcile that math with a two and a half percent increase because...
Yes.
Those numbers seem very different to me. Can you, can you help me with that, please?
Absolutely. So the trustees, as you know, are contributing money every year. The trustee's budget has been working at a deficit every year. So they need to stop basically pulling the principal out of the endowment to cover some of the expenses. So to do that, we've kind of taken that 215 for the past couple of years and said, all right, well, let's freeze this number, and the delta of change, we're going to ask the town to cover. Because right now, the, the trustees are paying 80% of the material costs. So we're trying to freeze that a little bit, have the trustees, you know, work on fundraising, getting money coming in revenue, because as you know, it's just what we can raise ourselves. So we're asking the town to pay the difference of that. That's why you see it's a bigger than a 2% increase.
Does, is this line affected at all by, am I correct? That with overdue fees, were fees?
Fees have nothing to do with that line.
Okay. I, I may just follow up because I'm kind of a numbers geek. And I'm just, maybe I need to see the other side of it to see about the math. It just, like my colleague, that one jumped out to me a little bit and just, it would help to understand it.
Well, I think part of the challenge here is that there is, the, the other piece of this is the library endowment. And, and, you know, there, that's a, that's part of the fiscal element of the budget that, you know, that the town doesn't see. So, you know, and I, I think that sometimes there are decisions made about library budgeting and library appropriations that have, as my colleagues are pointing out, a disproportionate effect on the town's sort of share of expenses. And I think this, this, that, that particular line item highlights that issue. Joe, did you have some further questions?
No, I'll, that's it.
Mary, further questions?
I just, one other, the statistics are helpful, and thank you, because they really, I think, give us a sense of service, of the, the service demands on the library. Do we, in, in any of these metrics, do we have a sense of how much activity in our library comes from our neighbors and other communities who, you know, because we're part of OCLN, the, the great thing is, you know, everybody gets to use the library?
Yes. So the answer to that is only in circulation statistics.
Okay.
When people check out a book, you can see if they're, you know, resident versus non-resident. And that is reported in our state statistics.
Yep.
What we don't see is who walks in the door, who comes in, who connects to wifi, who uses our computers. We don't ask, what town are you from when you walk in the door? It's a library free for all, so unfortunately, that's a stat we really can't capture without really getting into people's privacy. Who are you and why you're here?
Circulation-wise, is it, you know, is, you know, in terms of the materials checked out of the library, is it, is it 90% Hingham, Hingham residents, 80%?
Yeah, it's, it's more like 80% Hingham residents to about 20% non-residents.
Okay, thank you.
And we're in the lender, right, within the OCLN?
Yes, we're a top, one of the top lenders in OCLN.
One of the, one of the factors there, of course, is that, and this may change soon because we have new libraries being built around us. Waymouth has a brand-new library going up very soon nearby. New Hall has a new library opening soon. So the, the facilities that are available in surrounding towns may affect the degree to which their citizens come to our library, use our library. But of course, OCLN is one of the great, great treasures of this, of the, of library. Well, all sorts of library networks, OCLN, Minuteman, and many others. Because they allow library services to be among the most regionalized of services. And so, but it certainly is true that people, people love our library. We, they admire our library, we admire our library. But one of the effects of that is that they do use it, especially when the power goes out in surrounding communities. Thank you, thank you, Hingham Light.
I was going to ask one other question, with respect to the ebooks. Are we being affected by publishers' policies in terms of freezing out libraries or delaying access? Like, I, I think it was Macmillan that says, six months, there's an embargo, they won't give you the books.
Yes, it is Macmillan, we are affected, all libraries are affected by that. I know the ALA has taken a strong stance against them. They're advocating for them to pull these policies back. Since ebooks started, we've found that some publishers had started that route and then had such an outcry, they pulled it back. But it's this constant tug-of-war. And it, you know, to be fair, it's hard for the publishers to find, it's a new model, it's a new way of doing business, and they're trying to maximize the business side of it. What they often forget is people who buy books oftentimes are, are met with those books in libraries. Libraries is the best source of advertising and selling those books. So it, it's, it behooves them to loan them to us and not have these embargoes. We're waiting to see what happens with Macmillan. It's unfortunate how they're set up, and we're hoping it changes. That's a, that's a great question.
Anything else, Mary?
No, I would just add that I, the library has many wonderful programs. I think the addition of the extra hours during midterms and final exams for the students in the community is, I think, very helpful and very appreciated. And so thank you for opening the doors of the library, keeping them open late at night. And I think you do a little extra on the weekends sometimes, helps a lot.
Thank you for saying that, that's good to hear.
We know the students love it, because they're there in vast numbers, the high schoolers on those late hours.
I think the parents love it as well.
Well, you know what, the staff love being there to help people. So I, I will say that one of the things that makes this library best, besides the trustees, which you guys are awesome, it's, it's the staff.
Sure.
I mean, you walk in, everyone is awesome, everyone is so helpful and so friendly, and no one's going to stop until you get, you know, get good service and get what you're looking for. So just a shout out that we wouldn't be so great if we didn't have such great people.
Well, and, you know, we talked about culture at the country club. I think it's culture at the library as well. You know, I think the welcoming facilitation, the use of the materials there and access to programming, you know, you've blended new staff with folks that have been there for decades. You know, I think it's not only, seems like not only a great place to, to be a resident, but also, you know, I think you've created a positive work environment there as well. I did have a question about the long-term plan, and maybe you just want to comment. That's part of your accreditation, right, as a library, to undertake that periodically?
Well, yeah, in order to, you know, maintain eligibility for state aid, we have to have a long-range plan on files. So it is something, even if we didn't, it's just a good idea. It's a good idea, it wouldn't be on the same page.
But it's also a...
It's a requirement for state aid, yeah.
For state aid, it's not an accreditation. I mean, we wouldn't be decertified if we didn't have it, but we need it to, to be eligible for that very important aid. You know, we need every dollar we could get, and that's part of it.
And then the other thing I'd say is, you know, I know this summer in particular, you know, my colleagues and I and Tom and Michelle were very concerned on a few of those really, really hot days that we afforded people a place to go. And you were very cordial in allowing us to identify the library as a cooling center for the community. So, you know, I know that it provides that sort of relief as well for folks. So not only when the power goes out, but also when it's especially hot. So, thank you.
And they have plenty to do when they're there.
Yes.
That's absolutely right, did you have another question?
Yeah, have there been any security issues or concerns or anything that needs to be addressed in the budget? You know, the security people coming in, any concerns about people bringing in things that they shouldn't be bringing in, or crowd control, just?
Security in the, are you referring to kind of people bringing weapons in?
Or just, just any, have any security concerns been voiced by the staff? Everyone feels like it's a safe environment?
I understand. So I, everyone does feel it's a safe environment. I think the, the security concerns we have revolve around our, you know, children's room sightlines, things like that. We did have security cameras in the capital budget last year. We installed really high, you know, high-def, unlike our old system, cameras, which is only helpful after an event. So we, we're always vigilant, it's a public building, anyone can come in. We, we all feel very safe there, but we are aware that the way the children's room is set up, there's a lot of places for kids to escape to. We have our procedures, if we find a child's gone missing, how to, you know, kind of lock down and quickly respond to that. Kids wander, we find them. You know, so I think that's really the, the biggest concern we have.
And I think police, police have been very responsive. I mean, your, our communication with them is very good. And when we've had any concern...
Yeah, sometimes they'll say, oh, you guys just want to show up and do a walkthrough, you know? Check out a booklet here. It's good for them to, you know, walk through and just be seen sometimes.
Thanks.
Anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
Questions from the public on the library budget? Seeing none, are you off to advisory as well this evening?
Oh, no, I'm done.
No, okay. Very good. Thanks, very well done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Thorell, Ms. Donlin. See a number of members of your commission, if you care to identify yourselves and identify your, your membership, that'd be great.
Vicki Donlin, Chair of the Commission, and I want to recognize that our entire commission is here.
Yes.
Ryan Lynch, Bruce Thompson, Adrian Ramsey, Nadita Scott.
Do you need to, do you need to call to order or anything, or you?
No, we, we came from our meeting directly, so thank you though. And obviously Mark Thorell, our Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting us here tonight to provide you with a report on the Rec Commission's budget. Our operating budget is one line item, which is the department head's salary. Most of our fiscal operations happens in our revolving fund. And to take a look at our scope of operations, looking at adult programs, we offer 30 adult fitness classes per week. These classes consist of spinning, yoga, boot camp... These classes consist of spinning, yoga, boot camp, and all of our fitness classes cost ten dollars per session. Besides all of our adult fitness offerings, we offer adult tennis, dance, golf, dog training classes, and a variety of one-day trips and special events. Taking a look at our children's program, we try to appeal to parents who are looking for affordable options without sacrificing quality. Our children's curriculum has surpassed over a half-billion dollars in revenue per year, and on average, program class costs twelve dollars per session. To note a few of our larger programs, Funky Feet School of Dance has seven hundred dancers, Kid Kicker Soccer has three hundred, three-to-five-year-olds, Tennis has two hundred kids annually signed up, Field Hockey has two hundred girls, and a hundred kids have participated in our track and field program. Looking at our summer camp, our summer program is offered throughout the entire ten-week summer. The preschool program enrolled over six hundred and fifty toddlers, the playground program, which is ages six to twelve, enrolled twelve hundred children, and our continuously growing Teen Extreme program has grown to more than six hundred and fifty teens. Teen Extreme has proven to be a favorite among Hingham teens as we take field trips to Six Flags, Water Country, Canopy Lake Park, trampoline parks, paintballing arenas, and many other extreme trips. Another camp that has exploded in popularity over the last three years is our Country Club Sport Experience, where we work in partnership with the Country Club staff. This program is for children in grades second through eight. The kids rotate between tennis, golf, swimming, and a variety of other sports and games. Looking at field and facilities that the Rec Department manages, we oversee the operation of the Rec Center consisting of the basketball gymnasium, game room, fitness room, and two fitness studios. The Rec Center is open seven days a week and for more than a hundred hours per week. The Commission also manages the Rec Barn, which is a newly renovated barn that used to be the site of Hingham's cottage factory. At the Rec Barn, we offer public bathrooms and operate a program room that generates over three hundred thousand dollars per year. The Rec Department permits and/or manages thirty acres of town athletic fields, twelve tennis courts, five basketball courts, and five playgrounds. It is part of our mission to keep these recreational amenities safe and accessible. Taking a look at Slide Two, Benchmarking. Our quantity and scope of programs continue to rank in the top quarter out of the towns Hingham compares itself to. This is accomplished while receiving less tax revenue than the majority of comparable towns, which we definitely look at as a, as a positive. Slide Three, Key Initiatives. One key initiative for the Rec Commission, who are working with the School Department, Board of Selectmen, Country Club, and DPW, is to finish and to possibly start to implement recommendations that are born out of the town-wide athletic field study. And to date, some of the tasks that have been completed with the study are, site visits and observations have been made to every field and outdoor tennis court, facility inventory and maintenance matrix has been constructed, eighteen interviews have been conducted to field stakeholders, online survey, a field usage matrix, a current matrix, has been constructed to show the current usage, and we've also held a public meeting. This study is expected to be finished by the end of February. A second key initiative for the Rec Commission is always looking at ways to partner with other departments and/or committees, like the Country Club, Elder Services, and the trustees of the Bathing Beach. We are all in the field of offering quality programs, and anything we can partner on only increases the quality of the programs. And Slide Four, the Rec Staff. The Rec Commission and I are so fortunate to have such a dedicated, hard-working administrative team. We have three full-time administrators who are all extremely efficient and motivated to serve the residents of Hingham. In addition, the Rec has twenty-five year-round, part-time employees who are extremely customer-friendly and devoted to the Rec Department. Our year-long, part-time staff cover a variety of programs, including the fitness room, which is open a hundred hours per week, the child program, childcare program, offered every weekday morning, Open Rec, which is offered free seven days a week to the Hingham public, birthday parties, and Friday night events. We are incredibly lucky to attract some of the hardest-working, brightest and dedicated counselors and lifeguards. We typically select a hundred counselors and lifeguards to cover our summertime needs. As a team, we continue to strive to offer the Hingham community high-quality and affordable programs, as well as provide safe and accessible recreational fields and facilities.
Question. I'm kinda tired just listening.
Long hours, seven days a week.
But a lot of fun. Uh, Joe?
So, I am a, a recent convert.
A new member, we see you down there.
To the Rec Center, I've been doing spinning classes, and I am just so impressed with the work of the staff, what you've put together. The budget item here, there's not much to analyze. You really deliver so much for the town, so thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Mary, I just wanna start out by, you know, this budget is really, it's, it's just for, for the director, and, you know, Mark, it has been a pleasure to watch you grow into your role and expand your role and continue to just dedicate yourself to this town. You know, I think when, you know, Karen and I were in the room next door in AdCom, you came in, and, um, if I think about what the Recreation Department looked like when you started out versus today, it's really incredible, and, and while I know that there are many, many people involved in doing that, your leadership is instrumental in its success, and I am particularly really pleased to see the leadership that you're bringing to the field study. You know, there are different points of view in Hingham. If you, if you're potentially not a user of fields, you tend to look around and go, gosh, there's a field every time I turn around, or another tennis court, and if you're a user of those things, you're saying, gosh, why am I driving to Cohasset for this, and why can't I get on a tennis court where there are big cracks? And I think that this field study is gonna be so important, because it's going to be an independent, data-driven look at our facilities. And I think that that is gonna really help inform decisions that we have, and I, I know that you've had assistants, including Michelle, but, and at the same time, I know that the Recreation Department is carrying this ahead, and I'm, I'm glad that you made the request of CPC. I just had, just two questions. One, in, in terms of the barn, you know, you mentioned it generates three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. I'm just curious, like, how many hours a week is it, is it used for programs? And what's, what's generating that three hundred thousand? Is it dance?
There's quite a few, it's primarily dance and yoga classes
Yep.
in the school year, and then our summer camps rotate through there, so, I mean, it, it's open seven days a week, and then we're running programs in there, typically every weekday morning from nine to eleven-thirty, and then from the time the kids are out of school at three PM to eight-thirty PM.
So, in terms of, in terms of the vision that, that you had for the barn, and, and how you could use it, it seems to be bearing out?
Definitely, it'd be hard to get any more utilization
Yeah.
out of it than it is now, so, yeah, definitely, it's been a huge benefit.
I would be remiss to not say, there isn't a person in this town who doesn't use that field who doesn't applaud the bathrooms.
Absolutely.
I went to every meeting in town, and everybody looked at me like, this woman just needs a bathroom, give her a bathroom, she'll be happy. But it makes a huge difference, because people come from all over the South Shore to not only the playground, but the fields, and now there are bathrooms, we forget, we, we know Town Hall is here, but it's not a place you go on Saturdays and Sundays, so to have the bathrooms there, and they're regularly used by grandparents and
Yep.
new moms and kids, so, the bathrooms count as well as the generation.
Absolutely.
I like the money, too, but.
I didn't see that in the pie chart, but that's okay.
And, um, what, what's your membership now in the fitness room downstairs?
Right about five hundred members.
Okay.
A hundred of those are, are free, we do offer seniors, Hingham residents seventy-five and older, a free membership, and about a hundred seniors take us up on that offer, so...
And a couple of them are a hundred, so...
We have, we have a couple who are, you know, George Davis, who's a hundred and two, so we have a couple of members over a hundred that
Yeah.
utilize the fitness, so, you know, kudos to Town Hall to have this fitness center here, where seniors can use it, because it is seventy-five and older, it's growing, and we're proud of that. I mean, that's important, they're comfortable coming to a fitness center that meets their needs.
Thank you, that's all I had. You know, I, I couldn't help but pick up on the fact that throughout your slide, you talked about partnership, and, you know, I think of you in tandem with the Country Club in that regard, I feel like you, that you're part of the community fabric, and when, when anything's going on of a recreational nature, or you can augment something in that way, I think that you, you in particular, Mark, are willing to step up and go the extra mile to, you know, to, to make sure it's done correctly and to be a resource, I think. And, you know, in particular, on the field study, you know, I know you and the Commission really were spearheading our collaborative approach to bring all the stakeholders to the same table, so that we can get on the same page with respect to, you know, significant infrastructure in, in, in the town. And so, I, again, applaud your leadership on that and your collaboration with
Thank you very much.
you know, the schools, with us, and, and with your fellow Rec members, and I, I guess I'm wondering, I know that the studies due the end of February, we had talked in the, in the deliberation process around funding the study, whether there might be some ability to identify some low-hanging fruit for this town meeting cycle, are you seeing that, or you think we just, we need to get to the end of the study and really, really comprehensively review that?
Yeah, at our last meeting, we did ask Weston and Sampson to, to take a look to see if there is a recommendation, one or two, that wouldn't jeopardize the future plan that, or recommendations that they come up with, and so that they, they said that they would go back and take a look at that. We haven't received that yet, and we're not sure what the, you know, the Board of Selectmen or the Rec Commission, if they would wanna push for it at this town meeting, and, or wait for the entire study to be done, but we are still looking into that.
Okay, all right, and maybe I'll, I'll just follow up with you on that
Okay.
offline. You know, the other challenge it seems to me for you for the coming summer is the pool, and I'm wondering, you know, what thought, thought you've given to kind of your summer activities, given, given the lack of the pool at the Country Club?
Yeah, so, the, our biggest camp that is affected by it is the Country Club Sports Camp, where every day from twelve to one, they would utilize the, the pool. We're still gonna try to run that program and just modify, modify what we do from that, for that hour. It's still gonna be a great program, where the kids are rotating between the golf and the tennis, and we'll, we'll come up with something for that last hour, so it'll still be a great fun program. Obviously, with our summer camps here, we won't be able to take the field trips over there to go swimming,
Yeah.
but I don't think that'll impact enrollment for our numbers here at all. I mean, it's, it's great to be able to go there to take a field trip, but I don't think it'll impact enrollment for our summer camps here.
Okay, great.
Are you, are you looking to perhaps more utilize the Hingham Bathing Beach?
Yes, perhaps, we're in definitely discussion with the Bathing Beach trustees to get involved down there, so, currently, we do rent out kayaks and stand-up paddleboards from there, but, yeah, we're in discussions to work with, with them at the beach as well.
Well, and I think the, the new, I really shouldn't be called a snag, Snack Shack, you know, the new facility at the Bathing Beach, I think.
With bathrooms.
With, with, exactly my point. You know, that, that was one of the challenges down there, I would, I would assume from a program, I'd say, and point, particularly if you, you know, think about augmenting some of the summer kid, kid programs down there, and now, you know, with those facilities there, it gives you, it gives you potentially an alternative.
Yeah, they're def, oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I think one of the benefits that I've found working with Mark is that he's very flexible and understanding, you know, Rec is sort of what recreation in town is, so, it's not like we're in one spot. So, when we sit down, or when his staff, who are very creative, sit down and think about, okay, where is there a place that recreation isn't happening, that it could be happening? What could we do to make that happen? And again, to the, to the new bathhouse, they're gonna have a porch, they're going to have a space down there, we already have kayaks down there, how can we benefit from the fact, we've already got people down there working with Rec? So, there are opportunities that this year we'll even open that more. So, we're always thinking about it, and it's due to the leadership of Mark and the staff that come up with great ideas, and it's just, whatever, if somebody mentions something, you have an idea, send it over, and we can act on it.
Well, but then, then the sort of strategic analysis that I'm sure you undertake with your staff and your board is, you, you gotta be able to pay for this stuff, and so, you know, again, the, the town pays for the director's salary, but all the programs are self-supporting, so, I think it also shows your ability to, you know, kind of take the pulse of what the recreational needs and desires are of the community, to offer those programs in a way that's accessible and affordable, and people respond to that, it seems to me.
It's, it's a good business model, you know, you find what people are interested in, what they are, where a gap is that isn't being filled, we fill that gap, therefore we can offer the program at a very reasonable price
Right.
compared to other places, and, and if it's profitable, we can keep offering it year after year.
Right.
And if I may, just you, when you were talking, it just triggered something, and Mark had mentioned on the slides, the Hull Street Playground, I
Yeah.
have driven by there a few times in the last few weeks, and just what a nice thing for that neighborhood, and when you think of all the busy streets that are, that are in that corridor of Hingham, having, having a playground there that children can walk to, I think is so important, and it really came out beautifully.
Oh, thank you very much, we're excited to, I mean, it, it's constructed now, but we're excited for the springtime and the good weather and see kids playing out on it, yeah, thank you very much.
That's fantastic. Any other questions? Questions from the audience on the Recreation Budget, from the Recreation Commission?
Thanks for being here.
All right, thanks for coming, are you going to advisory, or are you done?
No, not tonight, next week.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, good luck with the process, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, I think we have one appointment to do before we cut on our hats, is the Water Commissioners.
This is Robert Stansel for the Historical Commission.
Yep, that's what I have in my packet. So, you know, one of the things that we try to do, as you know, at the, at the beginning of the cycle, is we, we go through a talent bank application process, we had over seventy volunteers step up, we've tried to continue to place people where we have openings, and then where we have particular specialized requirements for the opening, sometimes it takes us a while to be able to identify somebody with the skill set that's willing to volunteer. We have Mr. Stansel, who is an architect, and he is willing to serve on the Historical Commission to fill an architect's spot, of all things.
Yes, and we have the letter from the Boston Society of Architects recommending him.
Any, any discussion on the potential appointment of Mr. Stansel? If not, I would take a motion.
I move to appoint Robert Stansel to the Historical Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June thirty, twenty twenty.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. All right. Naming of the Water Company.
Before you go there, I'm just wondering.
Do you have another appointment?
No.
Should we just do the?
I'm just wondering if we wanna finish town business before we go.
Yeah, yeah, let's do that, let's do the, let's do the vote.
Yeah.
Great suggestion. So, we have a, a request for a one-day wine and malt beverages license. This is the Cultural Series at the Ames Chapel, if you haven't gone, if you haven't gone to the Ames Chapel, you're missing out. I know there's an author coming the week of February eighth, it's just a lovely, lovely event, so I would encourage you to take advantage of that programming, and in particular, there may be wine and malt beverages available to you if we grant this license tonight. So, I would accept a motion to approve the issuance of three special one-day wine and malt beverage licenses to John Davenport on behalf of the Friends of Hingham Cemetery, Inc., for the winter Cultural Series to be held at the Ames Chapel on January eleventh and March seven, twenty twenty, from seven-thirty to ten PM, and on February sixth, from seven PM to ten PM. So, moved.
Before we take a vote, we typically get some sort of input from the
Yeah, the packet, the packet looked complete to me. He signed it. Yep.
Yep.
So, there's, they're, they're comfortable with that, great, okay. So, then, uh...
So, motion's been moved.
Uh, well, second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, do, do we need to do our reports before we?
Well, I think, yeah.
All right, so, I think you know from a meeting or so ago, the... the Transition Evaluation Committee came in and shared with us their work on soliciting suggestions from the community about a name for the Hingham Water Company. And it's important because we're going to have to rebrand this. So there's all sorts of things that need to take place in order to conceptualize what the op, you know, what the operation will be named. So that comes to us in our capacity as the water commissioners. We were provided with the background analysis, background survey results that the T and E committee collected from citizens. And, you know, there are a few that sort of rise to the top of the list for, in terms of the numbers of folks who supported a particular name. So I don't know if my colleagues have any thoughts, Mary in particular, if you wanted to share your thoughts.
Well, you know, I think my, my kind of process suggestion here, because I think we, in, in terms of the work and the transition, I think we ought to make a decision on this within the next two weeks. Because there's
Yeah, there's stuff.
Stuff that has to get done. I think that we were all kind of in receiving mode and we got all this. What, what I might suggest for tonight is maybe kind of a more general discussion about, you know, kind of our reactions, what we, what we're thinking about, how we're thinking about it. Even maybe just to sort of ask ourselves the question, do we think of the names that we have? Do we think there's a name here? You know, would we, would we feel good about a, a name that's here? And, and I think, like, for me, I'm, I'm interested in, in both of your views. So, so maybe a kind of a more general discussion, if, if that's, if that works for both of you.
Yeah, but I, I also think maybe, you know, is this stuff available on the website? Like, you know, the T and E committee solicited from the public. We're going to potentially vote next week. You know, if people have strong thoughts, they should, they should reach out. You know, I, I, yeah. I also don't want to make more of this than it, than it is.
Right, I, I believe that the document that Mr. Taylor shared with us is up on his committee's page.
Okay.
And, and I think those were sort of some of the, the popular names. And I also say, we had for, you know, about four weeks, we, we offered people the opportunity to give suggestions. And I, I guess for me, as, as I'm looking at some of this, I think a question for us to consider as water commissioners is whether we have a particular feeling about whether or not to have name or names of member communities as part of the water company name. You know, in eighteen seventy-nine, this was founded as the Hingham Water Company. But there are many suggestions that, there are some suggestions that have the name Hingham in there. There are some suggestions that incorporate Hull and Cohasset to some degree. You know, and then we also kind of have names that are sort of tried to be more geographically significant without calling out sort of community boundaries. So, you know, I, I think one of the things I'm kind of interested in is, you know, what are both of your views on that? Do you have a, a strong feeling one way or the other as to, you know, whether to do that? Or there are a few names that are kind of more, they're, they're more kind of generic, if you will. And I, I think if, you know, getting a little bit of a sense of where we all are on that might help us narrow things down.
Do you have some thoughts, Joe?
I do. Well, first, we're not naming a company. There is no company that's going to be formed. And I think a lot of people were presenting names, thinking, ah, we're setting up this separate company. There will not be a company. This is a department within the town of Hingham. And it's like, you know, the Hingham Sewer Department. And other, if you look in Cohasset, they have the Cohasset Water Department. There, there will not be a separate company. And so names, you know, I just looked at the, the top thirteen popular names. Nine of the thirteen are companies. So none of the names that we use should use the word company.
Well, I don't, and I, I guess.
And I think it's easy to just put something else.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think we need to get hung up on that.
Right, but, but conceptually, it really is a department within the town of Hingham that is operating here. With that said, I think it's important from my perspective. I think I'd like to be inclusive because we are, we, we are the water department that will be servicing the towns of Hingham, Hull, and North Cohasset. I don't know to what extent the list of towns that we service will be static. And so I would not be looking for a name that had all three towns, for example. I think that, that could freeze us. So, you know, the names that have regional significance, the Weir River and the Accord names are the two that strike me. The issue with Accord is some people pronounce it Acord and some people say Accord. I'm not sure which is politically correct in this area. But those are the two names that I gravitate towards.
I, I would agree with Joe. I think I was gravitating toward, I think, the geographical distinctions. And I think in particular, I felt like the Weir River watershed is, is our, is our largest aquifer here. And so I guess I was focusing on potentially the Weir River Water System.
Yep.
I, Accord as well. You know, I think, I, I, I think those would be my priority. Hingham Regional Water System, I'm okay with that, too. But I, I guess I would gravitate more toward, I would probably prioritize the Weir River and then Accord.
I think I'm kind of in the same place for the reasons that you've mentioned. And I would add one thing, which is that I think that this is a stressed watershed. And we know that water conservation is really important. And in some ways, having the name of this department, referencing back to sort of the, the, the water system in some way, I think might, might help keep conservation efforts and stewardship of the water system kind of top of mind. Because I think that's, that's something that has emerged in the past several years as, as being really important. I don't, I don't want a name that's like way too long or too many things. I, you know, I, I tend to agree with that. Neither of you mentioned, there's, there's a name on here which is Bear Cove. Is that a, is that a possibility that?
I guess I, I, to me, it was more Hingham-centric.
Okay. Yeah, I'd agree with that.
People want it?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm fine with it.
Yep.
I will note that there is a Weir Water Company in Weir, Texas. So we need to emphasize it's the Weir River Water System.
How did you know that?
Because you typed in weirwater.com. It takes you right to the Weir Water System in Texas.
Okay. We don't want, we don't want our people calling their customer service line.
Exactly.
More importantly, sending the money.
Sending the money.
Good point.
And, you know, I would, I would say, Joe, I think that you're making a good point, which is that this is going to be a department. And so, um, yeah. So Tom or Michelle, I don't know, do either of you have anything to?
My only input would be, you know, we went over to Hull and we, when we presented over there with Jim, what, a month ago, whenever that was. And at the time, it was, it was a very, it was a very good feel in the room, a very cooperative feel in the room between the two towns. And I think where the three of you are going is, is respectful and I think would be appreciated by the people of Hull.
Okay, great.
So do we have enough that we want to act this evening or do we want to keep it open?
I mean, I, I would be ready to vote, but if people need more time to think about it, I'm happy to do that.
I, I'm, I'm ready. But I mean, and I know there was a press of time in terms of making sure that the next steps can be taken.
And so if we couldn't, so if we, if we picked a name tonight and we find out we can't proceed,
Yeah, we'll just come back with the moment.
We'd need to come back. So in some ways, if we, if we can coalesce on something, it might be nice to.
Is that, would that be the?
Get that started.
So we're talking about the Weir River Water System?
Or do you want to call it a department? Probably system would be better.
I would recommend system.
Yeah.
I'd keep it at just, what about just water? Because four, four, four words is.
So what, so what we?
Weir River System.
Weir, Accord Water or Weir River Water. I mean, if you think about it, we, you know, there's, there's Cohasset Water, there's Hull Sewer. Do we need?
Do we need system?
Do we need the word system because it's just one more extra word? And, um, you know, I think about people who set up for electronic payments of bills and stuff like that, short and sweet.
I, I don't disagree and I think you're probably right. The, the only caveat I would throw at you for you to consider is the Weir River Watershed is a pre-existing, the Watershed Association is a pre-existing organization that has branded that. I don't know if that matters or not, but, or if that changes the, the concept. I think that's sufficient. It's fine to do it. I just wanted you to think about it.
Right, so Weir River Watershed is?
The Weir River Watershed Association is, is already a branded association. But, but that doesn't mean Weir River Water wouldn't work for this.
And what about Accord or Accord? Is there, it, my, my sense is that you two don't like that one as much as Weir River?
I like them both. Equally, I, I think the Weir River, just geographically, it joins the towns.
Okay.
So I think it has that feel.
I guess I, I, I guess I do, I do like the incorporation of the system. I do think it kind of distinguishes that as an operation.
Okay, yeah.
A little bit different than the environmental entity that is the Weir River.
Right, so, sorry, bill pairs.
There will be an acronym, I'm sure.
Right. All right, so let's just look at those initials and make sure it doesn't spell a bad word.
Good point.
Or the pronunciation of it is.
There's no vowels there.
When I worked at Pepsi, we were, it was like an acronym city and, and there were a few that
Didn't work.
Really didn't work, yeah.
Yeah, I think you got it.
It's, I mean, my, my impression is that we're ready to. Tom, do we need a formal vote?
I would.
Okay.
I would.
So I would make a motion that that we refer to the entity
To be acquired.
Currently, to be, the water system to be acquired by Hingham from Aquarian as the, as the Weir River Water System.
And we are making that motion in our capacity as water commissioners.
Yes.
And I would just amend that motion saying that our action would be subject to review by our council to make sure that there are no legal impediments to our using that name.
Okay, yep. Got all that, Heidi. We'll put Bob in the minutes there? Okay.
With that, I would second.
Motion and a second? Okay, is there any further discussion on the naming of the water system? Join us at the microphone, Mr. Watson.
Why don't you wait till you get up to the mic?
Hi, Jim.
Hi, I'm sorry to hear you're going.
Aw, thank you, Jim.
If we lock the door, will I keep you here? Jim Watson, two ninety-one Rockland Street. I was thinking of the old term waterworks, you know, it's sort of generic. And Accord Water Works might be good, too, unless it's too long. Weir River is, is very good geographically, except it's, it's unique to Hingham only. And, and so in a way, something that is more multi-town might be better. Thanks.
So Weir River Water System or Weir River Water Works? I think system, only because it's really.
Fewer W's.
It's a little bit of a tongue twister. That's a good, good suggestion. All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the Weir River Water System shall say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Great.
Right.
All right, Jim Taylor, get to work. Great, so Kerry will undercase the.
I talked to him today, we'll engage someone tomorrow.
Great.
Good.
All right. Selectment and Town Administrator Reports. Michelle.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say happy new year to everyone, but nope.
Absolutely. Joe?
Yes, I have one thing I wanted to report on. On Friday evening, January third, the synagogue in Hingham Congregation, Shere Shalom, hosted a special Shabbat service. It was a service called A Service of Solidarity, Stand Together Against Hate and Antisemitism. The service was conducted in collaboration with the Hingham Hull Religious Leaders Association. I was there. The synagogue was filled with Jews and with non-Jews who were really prompted to attend the service by the recent stabbing attack in Muncie, New York, which was, occurred during Hanukkah when five Jews were stabbed by an attacker. The canor at the synagogue, Stephen Weiss, led a beautiful music service. And in attendance were at least a dozen clergy from houses of worship throughout the local area. The Reverend Sarah Holland, who's from the Hingham Congregational Church and president of the Hingham Hull Religious Leaders Association, gave a very moving speech at the end of the service. And she also submitted a statement to the editor of the Hingham Anchor, and I'd like to read her statement. Says, "As members of the Hingham Hull Religious Leaders Association, we raise our voices in solidarity with our Jewish friends and family during this time of rising antisemitic hate speech and violence. We affirm that an attack on one faith community is an attack on us all. We resolve to name hate when we hear and see it expressed and to meet hate with loving determination to create together a nation and world of mutual understanding, honoring and celebrating the beautiful diversity of our faiths and cultures."
Thank you, very well done, Joe.
Two things. First of all, just a, a little bit of a water update, which is that this week, the town, the Evaluation Committee will be interviewing potential operators. So our RFP process is continuing. That is on schedule. We have a couple of members of the T and E committee participating. We also have a representative from the town of Hull that was designated by Town Manager Lemnius and the Select Board, John Struzieri, who is actually a member of the Public Works Team in Hull. And so it's, you know, that, that continues to move along. I also just, I don't know if, if you want to put this up on the screen. I'll, I'll make copies for you. But Sue Nickerson put together something at our request, which I think is going to be helpful as warrant articles start to come in. And it's basically a debt schedule. And so when, what it shows is it shows for every kind of million dollars and two and a half million dollars in borrowing, what the impact is on debt service. And I, I think that's going to be important for us as a board. As, as warrant articles come in for articles on borrowing, for example, the Harbor Development Committee is putting together a warrant article for the town peer. They're going to ask town meetings permission to borrow money. Well, we have to pay debt service on that. And we have two choices. That debt could either be excluded, which means a tax increase, or we could absorb it in the budget. You know, very similar to what we saw Mr. Whalen doing with the Country Club. And I'm going to ask that Tom and Michelle, as warrant articles are being put together and submitted to the town, I'm going to ask that we give this document to those groups and ask them to take a look at it so that when they come in and talk about warrant articles, it's not just, you know, I'm, you know, will, will you approve the town borrowing three million dollars to do X, Y, Z?
It's not free money.
I, I want to know that that committee has had a discussion to say, okay, it's two hundred thousand dollars in debt service and this is how it's going to get absorbed in the town budget. I do want to give a shout out and my thanks to Bill Riordan, the Chair of the Harbor Development Committee. Committee, because he and the Harbor Development Committee actually did that before they voted and then I said, would you just go back and walk through? And they had a very good discussion about the fact that they're not only asking for, you know, some money for these seawalls, but they understand the impact on town finances in the next 20 years. I didn't think it was necessarily going to change their recommendation, but I feel like it's going to be really important that we have better connection between money we're borrowing and the debt service payments because again, unlike the country club, if you're a department, the town carries that debt service cost and I sometimes think that when we lose a line of sight to that, it's, I feel like we lose a little something. So, thank you to Sue Nickerson for putting that together and I'm hoping that as we have hearings on these warrant articles, we can use this as a tool and the Advisory Committee can use it as a tool to understand. I'd add one more thing, which is that when we typically borrow money, we don't pay the debt service until the year after. So, for example, if there's a warrant article this year, it'll hit in FY '22, but we got to know what's on deck because our revenue growth continues to slow down and the more money that's committed in our budget every year, the less money there is to fund new initiatives, so this all kind of has a price. So, anyway, I.
Well, and it's sort of in keeping with the long-term capital project presentation I know that you made last year and you went to every board and committee and explained that piece of it. So, this connects, I think, what we know is coming ahead of us, which is significant capital infrastructure needs that we need to address and we need to afford and we need to prioritize and so this is one of those tools to evaluate it.
And, you know, just kind of a rule of thumb here, but our revenue, it grows by about three, three and a half million dollars a year. So, that we have, in that $3 million, we have to absorb salary increases, increases in health insurance and increases in debt service. So, you know, that $3 million doesn't go very far.
That's right.
And this is, you know, this is one demand on that money.
Well, and I think we're the ones that typically have to do that analysis and so to kind of make people aware of that on the front end, I think is helpful, yeah. Anything else?
I just picking up on that, you know, we've been away for the holidays and I hope everybody had a happy and healthy holiday season, but we are picking right back up where we left off in terms of our budget analysis and as Mary alludes to, we will be moving to the consideration of warrant articles in preparation for town meeting this spring. Our Advisory Committee colleagues are across the hall, they're doing their diligence on the allocation of your tax dollars and the Capital Outlay Committee is meeting at the same time to consider capital requests from each of the departments in town. So, you know, it's an important part of our town cycle in preparation for town meeting. If you are interested, you can tune into a lot of meetings. I know sometimes it's hard to get here, but, you know, this is the point in the process, if you have questions, it's helpful to reach out. So, I would encourage you to get involved in your town government. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.